Two.
We do need to call the order and.
Oh, you want to roll call again?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll again, please.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Power?
Here.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Here.
Councilman Powers?
Here.
City Manager Erby?
Here.
City Attorney Wolf?
Here.
City Clerk Latnick present.
Item number two, approval of the minutes, um, the minutes, the reg- from the regular meeting, November first, 2021. Any comments, questions, deletions, or additions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November first, 2021. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Item number two, V, regular meeting, December sixth, 2021. Is there any comments, questions, deletions, or additions?
No, sir.
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for December sixth, 2021.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, presentation, proclamation, flag certificate, donation. And we have several proclamations.
We have a full house tonight.
Um, it's my privilege to read it, uh, if I can. I got sort of a sore throat. Whereas, the New Smyrna Beach High School Beach Volleyball Team is made up of fourteen members ranging from ninth grade to eleventh grade, and led by Coach, um, Jonathan Cunningham. Whereas, the team was twenty-four and one during the regular twenty-one, twenty-two season. Amen, brother. Regular, as I didn't there, but regular season averaging the only loss of defeating Kenny Bishop in the state quarterfinal. And whereas, the team won the inaugural beach volleyball state championship on May seventh, 2022, in Tallahassee. Yay! And whereas, the team finished this year ranked number one in the nation. Holy Michael, yay!
Wow, that's great!
And whereas, the city council and the staff of Edgewater feel it important to recognize their accomplishments by the youth in this community. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Thomas, by virtue vested in me by the mayor of Edgewater, do hereby recognize the New Smyrna Beach High School Girls Beach Volleyball Team as the 2022 state champions. Encourage all citizens to acknowledge and congratulate Coach Cunningham, Reed Luana, Becca Overly, Ryan Guinness, Gabby Bissell, E- Eden Anderson, Talen Redditt Huffman, Lily Tracy, Jalen Brown, Maddie Peterson, Lydia Spencer, Nob Buely, uh, T U Chees- I can't pronounce the name, C I A N F R O C C A.
What is it?
I'm sorry. Jenny Hutchinson and Marley Rogers on their historic win. And with that, I just wanted to give.
Take a picture of them.
If they want to come up here and take a picture, that'll be great.
Yeah, come on, girls, come on up here.
We're real proud of y'all. Uh, I'm all right.
This is dedication for them to do this.
Congratulations. Okay, the second proclamation, the office of the mayor. Whereas, uh, Ryan Gary is a member of the New Smyrna Beach High School Weightlifting Team, led by Coach Tim McCray. And whereas, Ryan became the Weightlifting Individual Twenty-Two State Champion in the hundred-and-twenty-nine pound weight class on April twenty-second, 2022, in Pensacola. Whereas, Ryan has won the district regional five-star championships. And whereas, Ryan has such a destination, he is limited to two hours a day in the weight room by, uh, Coach McCray. And whereas, through Ryan as a sophomore, his determination and the dedication will help him achieve his goals in breaking school records and state records in his weight class. Therefore, I, Michael L. Thomas, by virtue vested in me, as mayor of that city of Edgewater, do hereby recognize and honor the Weightlifting Individual Twenty-Two, um, state champion, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and congratulate him on his achievement.
Not here? Well, congratulations, Coach.
Okay, we got one more. I lost it. Did I give you two of them? Welcome to an Edgewater Council meeting. Thank you, sir. Proclamation by Officer of the Mayor. Whereas Cole, how do you pronounce his name? Servenek, as a member of the New Smyrna Beach High School Track and Field Team, led by Coach Ryan LaRoe. Whereas, in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one season, was a second-year javelin as part of the F H S A A competitive level since nineteen-sixties or seventies. And whereas urging, at the urging of Coach LaRoe, Cole picked up the javelin as an opportunity to score points. Whereas Cole opened last season with a forty-four point forty-two millimeter throw and a win at a preseason classic, and the end of the twenty-twenty-one undefeated season, along with a three-A state title in javelin over, in over fifty years, with the best season of fifty-one point sixty-one. Is that mil- like millimeters or? Whereas, in twenty-twenty-two, an unforgettable season for Cole, starting with the win preseason classic, breaking sixty millimeters, and the first time D R E R A use, uh, Spike Classic, setting personal record at six-point-nine-five millimeters at three-A Regional, two-A, and the second part of the stroke in the Florida, um, F H S A A state history. Whereas Cole won twenty-seven consecutive meets in the past two seasons, remained an undefeated in his high school javelin career, setting the meet or venue record in just about every meet that he has been capping off in the twenty-twenty-two season in his career and his, uh, second state title. Therefore, I, Michael L. Thomas, by virtue of me as mayor of the city veteran, do recognize Cole Servenek as the Twenty-Two Track and Field Individual State Champion in the javelin throw, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge and congratulate him on his achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My voice is doing. You want to read this one, Mr. Attorney?
Sure.
Thank you.
Proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas, National Garbage Mandate began in two thousand twelve to show community appreciation for the local men and women of the garbage and recycling industry. And whereas, the nation celebrates the week of June seventeen as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And whereas, the men and women employed by the city refuse department perform their jobs daily with excellence in all weather conditions and at risk to themselves, make significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of citizens in providing sanitation services to help our environment, prevent disease, and keep our city clean and disease-free. And whereas, the men and women of the waste management industry work hard to pick up, process, and recycle millions of tons of garbage and recyclables in our nation. And whereas, the proper collection and disposal of waste and recyclables is vital to preventing disease, litter, and dump heaps. And whereas, these workers have been on the front line during the pandemic. And whereas, the city of Edgewater recognizes the vital role the waste and recycling collection workers play in daily life. And now, therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Edgewater, I, Mike Thomas, do hereby proclaim June seventeen, two thousand twenty-two as National Garbage Mandate, and the week of June seventeen, two thousand twenty-two as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. The city of Edgewater, Florida, is calling upon each citizen to help protect our workers by being aware of and to drive safely when approaching garbage or recycling trucks. The city of Edgewater encourages all citizens to show their appreciations to the local garbage and recycling workers in our city.
Thank you. Randy Cosley, you want to come up and get this? While he's up here, don't leave yet. I want to preach to you a little bit about our garbage department. Our, we, we, we have the best garbage department in Voluski. We have, we are the only city in Voluski County that has their own garbage department. Everybody else is picked up by Waste Forever or somebody else. And it's a heck of a job, but you want to fight? You know, you talk about cutting out our garbage, and the people are going to come in here and fight for that garbage department. Thank you very much. And you tell the workers we said that, too.
We do have a terrific sanitation department.
Um, I know you, y'all, if, if you want to stay, fine. The rest of the meeting is going to be boring, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to get up and exit if you want to exit. Thank you for coming. It's, we're proud of you, very proud of you.
Go Kudos.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to... Distance comments. This is your time for the public to come forward with anything you want to say. If it's related to agenda matter, we would appreciate if you would wait till the agenda matters, um, on the record while we talk.
Before I go on your clock, let me just say, I'm a former Barracuda. And I was very, that gave me a great deal of pride. Mr. Merrick and Mr. Fuller back there, great people to work for and work with. So I, I was there at one point and know what, what it takes. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Doug Pettit. I'm a candidate for the Volusia County Council at-large position, which, as you know, means I would represent the entire county, including Edgewater, if elected this year. On April twenty-seventh, I signed the Volusia County Wildlife Corridor Pledge, and that pledge was for support of wildlife connectivity, to protect our springs, to protect our food supplies with the farms and ranches within the corridor, and support tourism for our economy. It was an easy pledge for me to support and sign, and if elected to the council, I will pursue the following. I support directing the county staff to send communication directly to landowners within the opportunity zone on a biannual basis to remind them of the status of their property within the wildlife corridor and the conservation opportunities available to them. I support directing county staff to coordinate with municipalities like yours to assist and educate their staffs on the landowners within the wildlife corridor that are within their city limits, so that they may be made aware of the contribution opportunities available to them. I support future land use designations contained in the Volusia County Comprehensive Plan being revised to address density and intensity of development on property within the opportunity zone. And if we must have new development, then low-impact development principles should be required. I support low-impact development principles and all new development within the county. With seventy-five percent of Volusia County residents voting to tax themselves for land conservation with the Volusia Forever Program, the county and local governments owe it to the citizens to pursue every opportunity they can for success. Money is not the issue, since both Florida Forever Funds and federal funds for farmlands are available. While land conservation within these programs is a willing seller's situation, the public needs to be made aware of the availability of these funds, and that's my purpose for speaking here this evening. The Volusia County Council is tasked with protecting the wildlife corridor and land conservation within the county. My pledge in my future position as an at-large representative would be to implement what the voters of Volusia County have stated they expect with regard to land conservation, and ensure landowners know the opportunities available to them. I look forward to the cooperation with this counter in, in working toward that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hurricane shutters.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Please, ma'am.
Please state your name and address for the record.
First name, James, last name's Collier, C O L L I E R. Edgewater resident. I'm going to contend that most of the city residents don't know that that ordinance exists. That is an issue. The second one is, there's no avenue to waiver that ordinance. Do residents, the snowbirds, of course, that own houses here and other places, uh, residents that are on extended vacations or absence due to family emergencies. If they have shutters up, they can't contend with the two-week requirement. Letters from the code enforcement doesn't result in the revenue for the city. If we establish a moderate price for a waiver, I'm going to contend fifty bucks. You've got five hundred people that apply for a waiver. You can do the math and come up with the amount of money that's going into city coffers. Communicate the ordinance, and then if you so choose to put a waiver in place, then you can communicate that in the city newsletter. Then everybody would have availability for that information. I will leave this package, my name, information included in it, to the secretary or whomever you wish.
City for the good.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Jeremy Scott. I live on Traveler's Palm here in the city of Edgewater, and I thank you for your service. I wanted to spoke, speak to you today about a water bill. And, uh, really not necessarily the bill part, the shut-off part. And, uh, so on Friday morning, May fifth, my water was cut off. I've been a citizen of Edgewater for five years, never been delinquent on any bill. Here was my surprise. No, no notice was put on my door in my mailbox or via phone when my water was cut off. I thought there was just a problem with the water because I saw a city worker out front messing with the water. At that time, when I saw him out front, I'm like, oh, I had a question anyway. So I walked out front, spoke to the city worker, water, he answered my question, but I was never informed that my water was being cut off due to a bill problem. So I called city about the water when I realized there was a problem. And the city said to me, city worker just said, oh, Mr. Scott, it looks like you're delinquent on your bill, so you need to pay your bill, and we'll cut your water off when we get an opportunity. I immediately paid my bill right then, went online while I was on the phone, and I paid the, the rest of the bill for that month. Um, so here's my issue is that I wasn't notified in any way beyond this. I brought my bill from last month up here. If you'll see in the right-hand corner, it says delinquent bill. And then it says right here, um, subject to disconnection on five-five, in that small print. I understand the need to pay water bills, I get that, and I understand the need to pay my bill. I also get, understand the need for the city, that when they're getting ready to cut off something as vital as water, that a citizen is notified, that it's getting ready to happen in some way. Even if in the bill, there's something input in bold print, either on the bill or with the bill, saying, Mr. Scott, if you don't pay your water, we will cut it off on May fifth. So a little more formal to include a date in, in bold. The one last thing I'd like to say, I'd like, uh, Mr. Powers, I'd like to thank you for, I left a phone message with you, and I emailed you, you promptly returned that. I appreciate that, meant a lot to me, and you talked with me about my concerns, and you also gave me some further education. So with that said, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Do they not send out phone calls?
No. It's, I'm trying to think, is, so this actually, it happened to my mom. She had.
Forgot, or?
No. Okay, this sounds kind of funny, but, um, she, the bill was being paid out of my dad's checking account, and my dad passed away, and, you know, she still had checks, so she thought there was still money in the account, basically, kind of thing. Not quite that bad, but it ran out of money, so it, she didn't realize because she wasn't getting the emails, because she didn't have, she didn't, didn't deal with email. So she didn't realize, and I can't remember, I thought it was like a slip of paper, or I thought it.
Or a door hanger or something?
Door hanger, I thought that it was, and maybe it wasn't.
Like a knock at the door?
No, it, it wasn't like that. She was like, I don't know what this means, and she showed it to me. I was like, um, we better go down to the, let's go down to the office and see what's going on. And it was like, you know, she was within a few days of, of it being shut off, and she didn't realize because it was going to an email address that she didn't know. So, um, maybe check an email address. I don't know if we send an email or how that works. I'm not sure how it works.
You address that, please.
Okay, so for utility bills, we do send out the, the bills. You know, as the gentleman pointed out, it does have the, will be subject to disconnect on that date. We used to have the call-out service, but unfortunately, due to changes and regulations, we're no longer allowed to do that.
What about a pink envelope?
I was going to say, could we just add something in the bill, maybe? Or, or even as something as, as, as highlighting that portion that says it'll be cut off?
We can look into maybe highlighting that area of the bill. Um, but we typically have upwards of two hundred, um, homes on shut-off, on a shut-off day. So to be able to notify each individual, um, on that issue would be very cumbersome, and we are very limited on staff as it is.
It was like in the bill printing process?
Right.
Like making sure that that font is highlighted?
Right, which is not done in-house, so it's.
Bright, bright pink envelope.
We can look at it.
Yeah, I mean, so is there something that could trigger and, and even an email, maybe? I don't know.
Automatically?
Automatically, right, or text alert.
We'll, we'll take a look at what options we have.
Yeah.
Um, I just think even adding an additional slip or something in there, but I mean, whatever is plausible for.
Yeah, to get their, get their attention, yes, I, I agree with that.
And I'm sorry that happened to you, sir, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
We'll try to do something to rectify that.
I think there's a, a relatively simple and cost-effective solution to that.
Right, because it actually, I mean, it costs us to have somebody go out to do the shut-off. Like, I mean, that's, you know, you're taking.
It would be more beneficial to send a warning and then not have to go through the cutoff process.
It would, it would, I think, anyway.
We'll, we'll, check it out.
Or what about, yeah, like a text, pay it now, and have a link to where they can just click the link. I'm serious. I don't know, like, I've, I've gotten that through.
It just sounds like extortion, but.
You have to be careful, then, you know, somebody hacks it or scammers it or scammers it, whatever.
It redirects to the city website, pay the bill.
Anybody else before we move on?
My name is John Fearretti. My address is twenty-six oh-three Traveler's Palm Drive. Several issues. City manager, you guys pay him almost seventy-four dollars an hour. He doesn't return phone calls. I've called twice, left a message with his secretary, and lo and behold, he doesn't call back. Left him a voicemail, he doesn't call back. Second issue, your code enforcement department and your building department, neither one of them see eye to eye. Major code violations on Traveler's Palm. Example, nineteen-eleven Traveler's Palm. There's a ninety-five-year-old oak tree that was cut down. Did any city council member agree to have a ninety-five-year-old oak tree cut down? No permits were pulled. I talked to the building department. Building department says you need to talk to code enforcement. Code enforcement told me to go pound sand, and by the way, the building department doesn't know what they're doing. He said, if you don't believe me, I'll put my boss on the phone, and he'll tell you the same thing. Third issue, you've got major structural problems in your D.R. Horton communities. I've notified your chief building inspector, which is, uh, not even an employee of the city. He's contract labor. Apparently, they went out there after I've issued, and you can go all on his website. I've submitted quite a few extensive photos of catastrophic building failures. D.R. Horton says they were all corrected, they were never corrected. This is going to be a catastrophic failure during our hurricane season. You have three-tab shingles, which, beginning next year, three-tab shingles, even though they have a twenty-five-year warranty, will only be insured for ten years for the insurance industry. But still, D.R. Horton is allowed to put them on brand-new homes. So those two big communities, in our city of Edgewater, in ten years, they all need a new roof. Otherwise, they won't be able to capture insurance. How is this possible? So first of all, that gentleman there, Mr. Glenn Erby, that gets paid seventy-four dollars an hour, needs to learn how to return phone calls and communicate properly with the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Mary Morris, I'm on Silver Palm Drive in Edgewater.
What, 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 what re, what street?
Silver Palm.
Silver Palm, okay.
Yes.
I was, I was interested, because I, because I live on Royal.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to make a comment about last month. You guys brought up the short-term rentals, things like, you know, the Airbnbs and VRBOs. I have the pleasure of living next to one of those. It is not a pleasure. Um, I really hope you take it seriously and look into it in regulating them, because the neighbors have no recourse. So I have to live next to a house that is like living next to a party and a first-day vacation every single day. Our bedroom is right beside the pool, so all we hear all day is kids screaming, adults partying, loud music. We, the only recourse we have is to call the police, and we have to call the non-emergent number. Takes them two hours to come, if they do come, and then by then, a lot of times, the music is turned down. They don't go next door and say anything. Um, we've called the code enforcement. The only thing we can do is if the garbage cans left outside. Otherwise, they won't do anything. So I really hope you take it seriously, because it is not nice and not fun living next to a place that rents out for one night, two nights, three nights, one week. There's, there's nothing, there's no regulation at all. And I do hope you look into it, because it's not, it's not a pleasure living next to a, a property like that. Whenever you're a resident and you think, this is my home that I live in every day.
Who have you made complaints to, ma'am?
Uh, we've called code enforcement several times.
Who?
Code enforcement, yes. And we've called the city police several times, and we have to get the non-emergent number. They come out sometimes, and sometimes when they come out, there's no, they don't hear anything. So they just leave. So we have no recourse. There's no recourse with the VRBOs, with the Airbnbs, there's no complaint tab. So it's like you're living next to a Russian roulette. We've had parties, wedding parties, we've had, some of the neighbors said they saw someone carrying a sex toy in. I mean, I don't, I don't want to live next to that, and I don't want to move. I don't think I should have to move because of a, a place like that. So I do hope you take it into consideration for some, something or to get rid of them.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, this is just a, a current, I mean, it, it, we haven't had enough time to work out all the, the details and all. We've just really established this, and we're, we are getting complaints about it.
Right, I was going to say, we are working on ordinance to bring forward, correct?
We'll bring you something in July.
Yeah, so that is being worked on.
We are.
Moves, and it takes a minute, yeah.
We appreciate that.
I don't think Florida Shores is an appropriate place for short-term rentals.
I don't either.
Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Rich Dill. I live at twenty-one twenty-eight Mango Trade Corner, twenty-second. I feel kind of funny, because I want to give compliments. First of all, we've been here for two years. Uh, had to use the police service, which was fantastic, very quick response. Uh, we've had some troubles with the kids at the bus stop, which I'll go into, had to use fire rescue. Which I'm here to back up and do anything I can do to help you. We need more fire rescue, okay, we're a growing community, we have more housing going in. My wife passed out, she was a nurse for forty-four years at Arnold Palmer, okay, before it was on Ar- Arnold Palmer. Okay, she passed out and because our fire rescue was tied up with nuisance calls, we did receive a fire engine, but we had to get the fire rescue unit from Oak Hill, which we had quick response, but had to wait because our guys were on a nu- nuisance call, which we all know what that is. So anything I can do and my neighbors, we're here to help you, okay? The police service, we've had problems with the kids at the bus stop, because the parents don't control their kids. And we all know what that is, okay, I was a school resource officer in Orange County, so I know what that is, okay? Anything we can do to up our police service, we need to do, okay, plain and simple, okay? I live at the corner of Mango Tree and Twenty-second Street. I put a Ring camera in, I have over six hundred vehicles pass my house every day, okay?
What street was this?
Mango Tree and Twenty-second Street. Okay, before we moved in, it used to be a four-way stop sign. It's a school bus stop for elementary, middle, high school. There's a pond with the canal there, where ki- little kids come on their bicycles and go fishing. People drive like freaking idiots, no reason, speed limit is twenty-five, okay? I want to throw garbage cans out in front of them, because they drive like freaking idiots.
Well, you'd get arrested if you did.
I, I mean, I would go to jail, okay? It's uncalled for, something is going, and now, I'm telling you this, the low number of vehicles. Some days we have a thousand vehicles pass my house, I have it recorded on my Ring camera.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, we need a four-way stop put back at that intersection, because people come up Twenty-second Street and think it's a race.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you, run out of time.
Okay, please, can you think about putting a four-way stop sign back at our intersection?
We definitely will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're both here?
They're both sitting right there.
Anybody else? All right.
Before we move forward, I'm sorry, is it okay if I ask a few questions about the D.R. Horton?
Yeah, I was kind of curious.
I just, well, I just, so my understanding is that they use private provider inspectors, correct? Right, so.
This is not really the time, I'd be glad to talk to you.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify that they use private.
Sir, you're out of order, please. Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
That's all, I just wanted to confirm that they use private providers. Clearly, we need to move forward.
When did you, when did you want to discuss it?
Not here.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Approval of changes and modifications to the agenda. Mr. Erby has requested to remove seven H from the consent agenda to be looked at further by staff. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Could we discuss the parking arrangements for the Fourth of July?
Not yet, when you, when you got there.
It's consent agenda.
You need to pull it. Oh, we can pull it.
Yeah, can we pull it, just?
Pull what?
Seven J.
Oh, well.
It's on the consent agenda, it's the last.
Yeah, when I get to seven, when I get to seven, we're not to seven yet, then I ask.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just, I'm jumping ahead here.
We're, we're up to six, council reports, Councilman O'Keefe.
Yes. I don't have anything, but I do have an announcement to make. Um, at the conclusion of this meeting, I will be resigning, um, I did write a little letter, so I would just like to read that. Um, my service of the city has been a great honor, I have learned so much along this journey. I feel we have some of the best employees in one of the very best cities to live in. My time has come to pass the torch to someone else, it has been a real pleasure working alongside of each one of you. I have grown so much as a person professionally and personally during my tenure here in the city of Edgewater. The resignation only comes due to my relocating closer to be with my family. At this time, I make a recommendation for the council to consider Jim McGinnis to serve in my seat. I feel Jim will be a great asset to the city. He's been in the area for a long time, he's a veteran Patriot Guard Rider trustee at the Edgewater Methodist Church. He's been involved in various events, including serving as our city Santa for eight years. Previous experience serving on a city board and has years of experience working alongside with the city of Edgewater. I want to thank you guys for the years of service allowing me to serve as your District Three Councilmember. I wish each of you on the day of success and to continue serving and doing a great job as our leaders for the city of Edgewater. My resignation will be effective at the conclusion of this meeting.
Okay, well, I have a little something for you from the council and from the staff and from the citizens. And this is a, a plaque from the city of Edgewater, and it says, with greatest appreciation, we the citizens, friends and employees forever honor Megan O'Keefe for outstanding service to our community as District Councilwoman from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. In air close.
I got a little slow.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Very nice plaque.
Um, ac- according to your recommendation, I think what we're gonna do is, um, we're gonna, since it's a shock to a lot of citizens, we're gonna give, um, some time for people to understand what has happened and to apply for the position. So, um, we're not ignoring your request, but, uh, I think we just ought to give the, uh, citizens some time and for some people. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I want the, the citizens to understand, because she's resigned and there's only six months left, the council appoints somebody to take that place, and then the, the general election, there will be an election to fill that, that spot. So, uh, that's why we're waiting until next month, I think.
Well, I had asked her, is, is she, is she still living at that residence, so she's?
No, I am not.
Oh, you're not? Well, then, then.
That's why the conclusion is I'm resigning.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted the people to understand that this is, is, uh, council appoints for six months and the election comes and there's whoever wants to run for that district is, are voted in. Yeah, it's a little bit six, a little less than six months, okay, that's it, I just wanted to, thank you.
But we.
Thank you for resigning like this, plenty of time.
You talk about her, you learning from us, I've learned a lot from you too, so, um, you know, you, you've been a added, um, view, a different point of view, and you, you, you work together with it, you know? Um, I've been on some of these councils where it's got very, very heated among the council members, so. Um, I appreciate your diligence and your care and your care to the citizens of Edgewater, because you don't do it for the money. You do it because you care about this city.
We wish you good luck.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I, and she got it, you know, um, I was telling her a story. I don't know if you remember Adam Behringer, he was the mayor of New Smyrna, and, um, really good mayor, people loved him. And he, uh, he put a lot of time in his mayor business and he had two restaurants, he's got one So-Nap on the B side and he opened another one up in Orlando, and he spent so much time with the mayor's business that he, um, lost his restaurant in Orlando, so sometimes you have to do that for personal gain, you know, you just, and, and she has a family, she's going to school, um, got a full-time job, um, I just, you know, I can't say enough about Megan, we, we really appreciate it, you know?
You've known me a long time, Mayor.
Since you're about that big.
Do you want to, um, discuss the process for filling the District Three seat now, or do we want to wait?
Do it now.
Um, I just need confirmation on, um, how you want this to work, you want, um?
I'd like to advertise the position, um, so the public knows about it. I mean, a lot of people didn't know she was gonna resign, and that would give an equal opportunity to the citizens that were, are interested.
And do we want individuals to fill out an application, I think?
Yes, yes.
Like you do for the boards?
Yes.
And then do we want all applications on the next agenda?
That would be great, yes, the next agenda, yes.
So we have it on the agenda a week beforehand?
Yes.
I know we're squishing time, but.
No, that, no, that, I mean, that, that's fine, I just need to know how to handle it moving forward to make sure. And the meeting is July eleventh? July eleventh, yes. July eleventh.
So Mr. McGinnis, put your application in, sir.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Powers.
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
Councilwoman Powers.
This TPO, uh, Executive Committee.
Have they picked anybody yet?
Yeah, she took, right, she took it?
We did, there, yes, um, so last month, we, you know, it went through the board and it was approved that, um, that she took the interim, took the permanent job.
Oh, good.
Doing a really good job, so, hired a, um, the CFO, I mean, it, it's hard to explain, but there are eight positions at the TPO, only four of them, they only had four people there, so they're doing, those four people were doing the jobs of the eight people.
That's a lot.
You know, with an interim director, with, so, yeah, she did a very good job and they've filled a couple of the positions, so.
Good.
It's, it's been, it's been very interesting, it's good, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bennington?
I have two things. I went to with Mr. Erby, the, uh, honor ceremony at the New Smyrna Beach High School, where we gave away four scholarships to some of our, our young kids, which was very, it was packed. Standing remotely, but that was, that was a nice ceremony. Also, I went to, uh, Amets put on a, a special, um, I don't know what you would call it.
A memorial there?
No, it wasn't a memorial.
No, it's still, uh, celebration.
Celebration, uh, yes, it had, that's a good, um, at which, the reason for this, they were honoring, honoring Mike Malardy, who is ninety-eight years old and he was given the Medal of Honor for the Ghost Beret, Brigade. Ghost Army, I'm sorry, yes, and in case you don't know what it is, it wasn't known at the time that there was a Ghost Army. Yes, it was, excuse me, yes, I thought I said that, World War Two. So it was a pleasure meeting the man, his family was there, and it was a very nice ceremony. And just think, he's waited all this time to get this Medal of Honor and be recognized as a, really a soldier.
I'll tell you, they finally, um, acknowledged the March Marine for that, and they gave them, I don't know if you saw that in the paper.
Yeah, it was, it was.
From World War Two.
It, it's interesting that they've taken this long to honor these men that put their lives on, on the line and they couldn't really say they were, what they were doing to anybody, which was, um, it was very ni- it was very nice. Ninety-eight years old, okay, that's all I have, those two issues, I usually have.
I appreciate, uh, you doing that for me, yeah, good, thank, thank you very much. Okay, my turn, and I'm, um, I said this last time and, but this gentleman wasn't here, me and Mr. Erby rode around to, I think it was seventeen different sites and subdivisions and where all the new buildings are, um, looked at them and I, I don't say anything, but I have the same thoughts as you do, is, uh, I built my house in nineteen seventy-eight and I would rather live in my house than some of these new houses, and I asked Mr. Erby about this, you know, we only have, what, two inspectors? Is that correct? Um, and so we have to hire out, which I don't understand, these other inspectors, you know, I guess, Mr. Erby explained they're putting their business license on the line to make sure, but, I mean, I could not believe the amount of houses that they are, I'm gonna say, I don't want to say throwing up, but they're building.
Slapping up.
They're building them quick, and, um, even in the million, million-dollar subdivision, what, what's that, Brookline or Brook, uh, off Glencoe Road?
Liberty Village?
Huh?
Liberty Village?
Yeah, Liberty Village, I'm, thank you. Oh, my gosh, I, I mean, they're, they're building houses in there, I, I asked Mr. Erby, I said, what do these people do for a living, you know? Uh, to make this much money, you know? And, and the average, uh, price of a house is going from three to five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm going, I just, I can't believe it, you know? Um, it's unbelievable, um, the amount of building that we got going on and we, we need to make sure that it's, it's done correctly or we're gonna have some problems in the future. And that brings to my next little speech is, I'm gonna remind you again, people out, not the audience, but the people out there in TV land that are watching, hopefully, um, remember your hurricane supplies, okay? Go get them now, go get your charcoal, go get your water, you know, take a, take your milk jug, rinse it out, freeze it, that's, that's a gallon of water right there, it's ice, you know, to keep your refrigerator cooler, um, they got a little, I, I, I like Bass Pro, a little ten-pack of flashlights, and they're so bright, the batteries come with them, it's ten bucks, five flashlights for ten bucks, and I set one in every bedroom, so when I go in there, I just hit that flat, the button on the flashlight and it gives me light in the room, you know, so. And I've got, uh, two or three in each car, they make, they make good stoppage stuggers too, but, but anyway, I, what really got me is during the three hurricanes and, what was that, huh, oh-four?
Oh-four, yeah.
I actually went to Winn-Dixie when they brought in a shipment of ice, a truckload, and watched two guys fistfight over a bag of ice, and so what I'm telling you now is, you know, go out there now and get your supplies, you know? Want, you know, get a bottle, uh, some bottled water, next time, you know, get a, a can of tuna, ready-to-eat meals or, you know, just have that on your shelf, just, just in case, because, you know, I would hate to see any of my citizens fighting over a bag of ice, so. Be prepared, you, we just, we just saw one last week, it just popped up and was, went across Florida like nothing, you know? It couldn't have been a hurricane that easy, so be prepared.
Especially with the shortages now, right now there's shortages on everything, and then the hurricanes come and people are gonna be really wanting their supplies, so it's, it's good to plan ahead for this.
Okay, item number seven, consent agenda, would anybody like to pull an item?
I just want to pull the parking for the Fourth of July, I want it explained.
Well, where's that at?
Seven J?
It's seven J, I'm sorry. I see the, the little map, but that doesn't look like near enough parking.
Anybody else want to pull one? If not, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of seven H and seven J.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
All right, seven I, or J, so we will discuss that.
I just, I have the map here. Is that all the parking?
Which map are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one that's down from City Hall.
It's on Vermont, right?
No, that's not, that's not it. It has to do with another item.
It's like in that extra lot.
Oh, okay.
Where the bake shop is.
Yeah, yeah.
In that wooded area type, there.
Right, and Edgewater United and up to this church.
And are we using, we're not using the cemetery?
You already did that one. You already approved that one.
And we're having it here?
Yes.
Good.
All right, that's all I needed, just to make sure we, because we always run out of space for the Fourth of July.
All right.
I make a motion to approve, uh, seven J, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yep.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Eight, under public hearings, ordinance and resolutions, eight A, second reading, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash zero dash eleven. Fire services special assessment. Please read the record.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash O dash eleven, in ordinance of the city of Edgewater of Volusia County, Florida, provided for the implementation of a fire services special assessment, providing definitions for the proposed fire assessment and collection method, providing for legislative determinations of special benefit, general authority, and applicability throughout the city, providing for initial proceedings directing imposition of initial assessment role, providing notice by publication and mail, providing for adoption and effective final assessment resolution, providing annual adoption procedures, providing liens, or and revisions to fire services assessments, providing for procedural irregularities and correction of errors and omissions, providing for interim assessments, and add, and alternative method of collection, providing for conflicts, codification, and severability, providing for an effective date.
Staff report.
Yes, sir. Although this is a second reading, I believe it's important to bring these things out at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the council is in the process of reviewing the fire, fire services assessment that would be imposed against the, a real property to assist in paying for fire protection services. On April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and again on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, council met in a workshop, setting with the Government Services Group Consultants for the Assessment Stud, Study. In those workshops, detailed information was provided, and the council provided consensus to staff to move forward with implementation of special assessment program. An amendment to the ordinance between first and second reading has been made, made to allow for exemptions for assess, assessments for veterans. So the recommended action tonight is a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash O dash eleven. But I have one more point to bring up. This does not set the fee. All this does is move it one step closer to the fee, which will not be even discussed until next meeting.
I think we ought to explain it a little bit in more detail to the people that are here tonight, that haven't been here in, in the past, about, um, the balance, the, um...
We have many properties that pay little to no tax whatsoever. Um, they have velourum tax with, uh, property tax, and the general fund is what supports the fire department. And like I said, many properties pay little to none. This brings some properties on parity with others to where everybody pays something, except, like I said, the ones that are being exempted, the veterans.
And we are going to try to lower the millage rate, uh, because of this?
We are going to be looking at the millage rate.
Okay. Now, that's what that's going to do, is the people that are paying up here, and the people that are paying down here, who are paying nothing, and I asked a question, how many people are we affecting? And I think the answer was given to me six, approximately six hundred people.
Yes.
Uh, minus the veterans and da-da-da, so we're affecting six hundred people that need to pay their fair share of the cost of, of the, uh, the fire service.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about this veterans thing? I should have brought it up before. Does that mean anybody that served in the service?
No.
No.
Not at all. This...
Specifically?
Yes, this is only for the veterans that qualify for a one-hundred percent, um, exemption from ad valorem taxation.
Because if you opened it up, it would, it could be massive.
What? Not all veterans.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
What we're trying to do is, uh, make everything on an equal playing field, uh, among the citizens of Edgewater.
They pay for fire services.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Any, uh, any more council comments? I had, I had a guy, uh, we, we last, I think last week we voted, we vote, we voted fifty, fifty do, fifty dollars and...
No, we haven't even...
We, we hadn't voted, but we talked about fifty dollars and what, what was the other part of it? There's two parts of it.
With the millage, with the millage.
Okay.
But there was also, um...
And I had, I had a guy talk, call me and say that he saw it on internet, that we're going to go up four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And I said, no, 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 no. No, I don't know where he got it from.
But, but another part...
What we're talking about is fifty dollars starting off.
Maybe. Another part of that was the, that they were looking at adding firefighters, so, since I believe it's a...
It's, it's an enhancement to...
Right.
Exactly.
The services, which is, we've just heard we need these.
Okay.
And again, tonight, this is just continuing a conversation, so.
All right, citizens' comments. Anybody want to say anything on that?
I'm not sure I am.
What? Come up here to the microphone and state your name and address again.
First name, James, last name Collier. I live on Silver Palm Drive. I'm not sure I heard all the comments associated with this assessment being applied relative to imposing extra costs for fire support.
Yes, that's what it's going to go for.
How much? What I saw was two hundred and ninety-five dollars per household.
That was the first, that was the highest on the scale that we looked at.
That was at one hundred percent, which we are not doing.
Okay.
And no decisions have been made.
Right.
The council in the city has approved all the buildings that are going up in the city. Fire support has always been paid for by property taxes. Why not? We're paying property taxes to Volusia County, okay? Why not go to Volusia County to request the additional revenue to cover what you need associated with fire protection for the community?
It just doesn't work that way.
No.
Yeah, the government, the...
We have to have our own, we have to pay our own way. County takes care of the county, and we, we take care of us.
But we do have a mutual service. Chief, you want to, you want to explain the mutual service? Can we, can we step in on your time, sir?
Sure.
Yeah, so we have a auto aid with the county, so the closest fire truck, it doesn't matter what color the fire truck is, the closest fire truck goes to the closest call. That's, that's, we have an agreement with New Smyrna and Volusia County. So, the example, earlier when we ran out of an ambulance, we have one ambulance in our city that we operate. When that ambulance is busy, we either request Oak Hill's ambulance, or we request New Smyrna's ambulance.
So we pay, we've got to foot the bill for this.
Yes.
Basically, yes.
Okay?
And basically...
And the taxes that we pay.
We're, we're trying to bring your taxes down.
Right, so the whole point is that it is, it would become a non-ad valorem portion, one, one small portion of it, and then the ad valorem backing down a little bit. So that means the millage, hopefully, dropping a little bit to offset the, the fee.
Okay.
You understand that you're, you're paying now for people that are not paying, but what we're trying to do is do this.
Is get a balance. What, what did you say about veterans?
So, uh, uh, this is just the enabling ordinance to begin with, but it would allow the council to make an exemption from the special assessment for veterans that qualify for the one-hundred percent ad valorem exemption from taxation, which would include, uh, veterans that are honorably discharged and have a service-connected total and permanent disability. So it's a limited class of veterans that would qualify for this exemption.
Same thing that the VA classifies, that's a hundred percent disability, okay?
So...
Most of them are combat veterans.
So basically, they're not paying taxes right now. They wouldn't get this new fee. They wouldn't have to pay this new fee, whatever it is, because they're not already, they're already not paying taxes at all.
Okay.
What is the current thinking relative to cost per household?
Fifty dollars is what we're thinking.
Fifty bucks.
Yeah.
A year.
Beats the hell out of a two ninety-five.
All right, thank you, sir. You've run out of time. Anybody else have anything to say on the fire service? I'll, uh, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number two zero two-two dash O dash one-one, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yep.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Eight B, first public hearing, community development block grant, small cities grant program. Please read it in the record.
Uh, Mayor, there's no reading on this one.
Oh, okay.
It's the public hearing.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Fox. I'm with Fred Fox Enterprises. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to notify the public as well as the city of the city's eligibility to apply for a small cities community development block grant. Um, the city is eligible to apply for up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. In that, there are three categories that you can choose from. You can only apply for one category at a time. Um, DEO, the Department of Economic Opportunity, requires you to submit for one. You complete that project, and then you can get in line and apply for other projects. The first category is the housing rehabilitation category, and that's where the city would go in, working alongside contractors and, um, owner-occupied, low-to-moderate income homes. You would either bring all code violations up to code, or you would, um, if it's deemed to be, to cost more to repair it than it is to replace it, you would actually demolish the home, build a site-built home in its place. Site-built home would be probably somewhere from nine hundred to, to a thousand square feet, concrete block. It's, you know, meets all current, you know, building codes and all that. The second is a commercial revitalization, and in that, you're actually doing street scape work, sidewalks, pedestrian malls, building facade work, you might do some planners, different things like that to revitalize your downtown area. Um, the city, which would be the service area, because everyone in the city would benefit from that, would need to be a, a minimum of fifty-one percent low-to-moderate income. The Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, just on a side note, is a, um, direct, is an allocation from HUD that's down to, um, comes down to the state of Florida, and its purpose is to benefit people of low-to-moderate income. The third is a neighborhood revitalization. This is the most popular category. That's where the city would go in and address infrastructure needs. Um, if you had streets that needed to be paved, you had water lines, you had sewer lines, all those needed to be replaced. You could do that. If you had sidewalks that needed to be put in, um, you could do drainage, you could do a community center, you could do parks. There, again, the beneficiaries must be at a minimum fifty-one percent, um, low-to-moderate income for application threshold. That fifty-one percent is just the application threshold. You also get additional points if you have a higher percentage. If you have seventy percent, that gets you your maximum points. Um, the fourth is a standalone category, and when I say that, it's, the state of Florida allocates a certain amount each year, each fiscal year, towards this economic development category. That category stays open until they run out of funds, and if they still have funds at the end of the year, they either distribute them to other grants, or they just roll it over into the next year. So for the categories one, two, and three, those applications are actually due July twenty-first. Economic development is open until they run out of funds, and in that case, you can actually request up to one point five million. Um, and that is providing infrastructure on a city easement property to facilitate a new business coming into the city or the expansion of an existing business. Business must create new long-term jobs and be included as a developer in the application. The maximum that may be applied for in this category is the one point five, as previously stated, and one full-time equivalent new job must be created for each thirty-four thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents being requested. So if you had a company, and, and I'll use an example of Love's Truck Stop, because we've done a lot with Loves. And, um, we had one in Glades County that Loves needed a deceleration lane, a turning lane to get into the... So CDBG provided the funds to pay for that deceleration lane. Um, Loves and City of Hawthorne needed to put in a groundwater storage tank as well as an upsized water main. The grant paid for that, and in return, Loves agreed to hire residents of low-to-moderate income. They have to hire them, and they have to keep, keep them on for at least a year, and DEO does track that. The, the problem with this, with this category, it's not really a problem, but I just, when you have a company that wants to come in, they have to be willing to wait for the city to apply for these funds, get funded, and then go through an environmental review stage. So, um, the state makes, you know, they, they can't even develop their property until all of that is completed. So there, you know, there is a little bit of, that's why in the last few years that there have been funds left over in this category.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Open, let me open the public hearing.
Well, she might not be done. I just, just a specific question on, can you, can this go hand-in-hand with the opportunity zone?
As far as the economic development category?
Right.
It, it's open, I mean, as long as it's within the city limits. There is no, there is no, you know, you're not limited to an area like you would be with your commercial, which is benefiting just the commercial district. Economic development is anywhere in the city limits. You would be, if you were outside the city limits, and if you were in the county, the county would have to be the applicant. But you as a city, as long as the project is taking place within the city, would be the applicant.
Okay.
All right, so continuing on. When we talk about low-to-moderate income on the next page, you'll see that these are set by HUD. They're updated every year, so just as, as an example, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, a family of four could make no more than fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. That's total household income, and that amount, four persons, does include any children if they are living in the home. So it's total household occupants, and then that would be the total, you know, the maximum that they could make. These grants are competitive, so you're competing with other small cities and counties throughout the state of Florida. So there's additional points in your application that you can, you know, you can obtain. One is through leveraging, so for every two thousand dollars of leverage, you get an extra point in your final score, with a maximum of twenty-five points or fifty thousand. So if the city commits to putting fifty thousand dollars towards a project, then you'll get an extra twenty-five points in your application. Um, you can certainly exceed the fifty thousand, you just don't get any more points. Um, additionally, for neighborhood revitalization and commercial revitalization projects only, if you submit your application with engineered stamped construction plans and specifications, and you've shown where you have applied for your permits, you don't necessarily have to have them in hand, but you have applied for them, then you'll get an extra fifty points for being considered shovel-ready. All permits must be submitted prior to the application submittal, and you cannot be reimbursed for shovel-ready design costs with CDBG funds if your application is funded, so it would be a cost that the city would have to absorb. There are steps required in the CDBG application process. One is to advertise and hold a first public hearing, obtain public comment and direction by city council to move forward on determining a project. That's what we're here for tonight. The second is to advertise and hold a fair housing workshop. I'll be doing that next on the agenda. And the third would be to advertise and hold a second public hearing to finalize the application. At that second public hearing, we're actually presenting a draft copy of the application and allowing for public comment on that. And at this time, you can open it for any public comment, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion? Oh, I don't?
Nope, no action is requested at this point.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so the second part of my presentation tonight is just on fair housing. Um, we don't need any action taken on this as well. On this is just to notify the public as well as elected officials of the Federal Fair Housing Act. Um, the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing-related transactions, including the sale, rental, or financing of dwellings. Discrimination includes refusing to rent to someone, steering someone away to a particular type of housing or neighborhood, enacting zoning measures to exclude particular groups, et cetera, because of membership in a protected class. The federally protected classes are race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familiar status, disability. A local government, a state, they can enact other, they can have other protected classes, but these are the federally protected classes. What is prohibited? No one may take any of the following actions based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin. Refuse to rent or sell housing, refuse to negotiate for housing, set different terms, conditions, or privileges for sale or rental of dwelling, falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, or rental, or profit persuade or try to persuade homeowners to sell or rent dwellings by suggesting that people of a particular age, race, sex, et cetera, have moved or about to move into the neighborhood, or deny any person access to membership or participation in any organization, facility, or service related to the sale or rental of dwellings. It is unlawful to discriminate against a person whose household includes one or more children who are under the age of eighteen years old. Um, this is known as familiar status, and it's in which one or more minor children live with a parent or legal custodian. Additionally, if you have a physical, mental, or mental disability, including hearing, mobility, visual impairments, cancer, chronic, mental illness, HIV/AIDS that substantially limits one or more major life activities or are regarded as having such a disability, a housing provider may not refuse to let you make reasonable modifications to your dwelling at your expense. A landlord may permit changes only if you agree to restore the property to its original condition. If you were in a wheelchair and you could not get into the front, you know, the entrance to your home, your landlord cannot prohibit you from putting up a handicap ramp. They can ask you to remove it when you move out, but they cannot ask, they can't prohibit you from doing that. Or a building with a no pets policy must allow visually impaired tenant to keep a guide dog. There is housing that is exempt from the Federal Fair Housing Act, and those are owner-occupied buildings with no more than four units and single-family housing sold or rented without the use of a broker. So if you're a private homeowner and you are selling your home and you are not using a broker and you do not own more than four units, you are exempt from the Federal Fair Housing Act. Senior housing exemption exempts some senior housing facilities and communities from liability for familiar status discrimination. These are known as the fifty-five-plus communities, the elderly communities. They have to be under a state or federal program that HUD has determined to be specifically designed and operated to assist elderly persons or intended for and solely occupied by persons fifty-five or sixty-two years of age or older. So they have to actually go through a certification process from HUD to do that. If you think your rights have been violated, you can contact the following. You can contact the Florida Commission on Human Relations. You can contact the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Southeast Regional Office in Atlanta, or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in Washington. You will need to provide your name and address, the name and address of the person your complaint is against, the address or other identification of the housing involved, a short description of the alleged violation, and the dates of the alleged violation. Additionally, the city has a fair housing ordinance that also includes steps and time limits in which complaints must be submitted and responses provided. What happens when you file a complaint? The office receiving the complaint will notify the persons filing the complaint and the respondent of the complaint and allow time for a written answer to be provided. The office will investigate your complaint and determine whether there is reasonable cause to believe that the respondent violated the Fair Housing Act. The office will notify you and the respondent if HUD cannot complete its investigation within one hundred days of filing and provide reason for the delay. Additionally, during the complaint investigation, HUD is required to offer you and the respondent the opportunity to voluntarily resolve your complaint with a conciliation agreement. Are there any questions?
That's a lot to take in.
I know. Yeah, that was a lot of information.
Any council comments?
No, sir.
Public comments? Questions? And we don't need a motion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd number eight C, first reading order number twenty twenty-two dash zero dash zero-nine, amending the police pension plan. Please read it in the record.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash O dash O-nine, in order to the City Council of Edgewater, Florida, amending the City of Edgewater, Florida, police officers' pension plan to amend the residency requirements for certain trustee positions, provided for an effective date, provided for repeal of laws and, provided for severability, provided for codification, provided for an effective date.
Staff report.
Yes, sir. This plan requires the fifth trustee to be a resident of the City of Edgewater. Until now, it's been very difficult to fill this position because of this requirement. And the board would like to open it up to allow people living outside the city to apply and be a member. So the recommendation before you tonight is a motion to approve or amend ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O dash O-nine.
Now, to amend, it's to allow the police to go outside, the pension to go outside the city limits, to get somebody to serve on the board.
Right, for the fifth trustee position.
Yep. I know there's a problem, because before I was elected, I was, I served on the police pension board, and it was very hard to get members.
Are we going to be able to get enough from outside?
The police chief seems to think so, yes.
Do what?
The police chief seems to think so, yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
No, sir.
Questions from the public? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two-two dash O dash zero-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Eight D, first reading order number twenty twenty-two dash zero dash ten, amending the general employees' pension plan. Please read it in the record.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash O dash ten, in order to the City of Edgewater, amending the City of Edgewater General Employees Retirement Plan by amending section thirteen dash forty, Board of Trustees for General Employees Pension Trust Fund, provided for filing with the Division of Retirement, provided for conflicting provisions, severability and applicable, provided for codification, provided for an effective date for adoption.
Staff report.
Yes, sir. This proposed ordinance amends the general employee pension plan to allow members of the board who have separated employment to vote in member elections and also serve on the board. So the recommended action before you tonight is a motion to approve, amend ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O dash ten.
So to allow past employees to serve?
Yes.
Sounds like a good idea.
Council, council comments?
It sounds like a good idea to do that.
Public comments? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two-two dash O dash ten.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
I'd number eight E, resolution number twenty twenty-two R dash O-nine, mid-year amended budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Please read it in the record.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash R dash O-nine, a resolution of the City Council of Edgewater, Florida, adopting budget adjustments to the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year budgets and providing an effective date.
Staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Bridgette, Finance Director, City of Edgewater. The mid-year budget amendment before you is adopted at fund level. You'll find the resolution this evening with additional detail in order to provide full transparency. The mid-year budget amendment, I will go over in quite, highlight level. The budget amendment across all funds is a net decrease of eighteen million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. This consists mainly of a reduction for the ten million dollars in ARPA funds, standard allowance, and the corresponding ten million transfer to the water sewer capital projects. So that twenty million is really offset by one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in additional expenditures. The various expenditures relate to transfers to capital projects, information technology funds, and operating costs throughout the various funds. The general fund, the general fund budget is increasing by six hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. This includes the police department requested seven additional vehicles at the last council meeting in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred. The Florida East Coast Railway Maintenance at the Ocean Avenue Crossing in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Transfers to the IT fund in the amount of one hundred nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one, related to radio replacements to be compliant with the new emergency management system, in addition to the various software maintenance and upgrade cost. Thirty-five thousand in increased fuel cost throughout the general fund departments. Twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-three for additional building permit technician, which is only the half-year cost, but it's being offset by building permit revenue. Twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty for the rapid flashing lights at the Thirtieth Street Crossing. Fifteen thousand for the AAA Traffic Safety Grant donation for the police department's traffic homicide trailer. Fourteen thousand, five hundred, an additional amount that was previously approved for the strategic plan updates. Seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five for fire department washing machine, of which there's grant funding of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The Recreation Impact Fee Fund Budget is increasing by eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which was the additional funds needed for the design portion of the pickleball courts. The CRA or Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, the budget is increasing by one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this relates to the true-up of revenue and projects that was approved by council at the January CRA meeting. The Capital Projects Fund Budget is increasing by two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, of which one hundred and ninety-four thousand is for an HLMP grant funding that is being used for Fire Station Fifty-Seven Roof and the Code Station Window and Door Mitigation. Twenty-eight thousand for an HMGP grant funding that's being used for the code building generator and wind retrofit. Eight thousand was identified to complete the Lake and Alice Park upgrades. Eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine for the additional design cost of the pickleball courts. The Water and Sewer Fund Budget is decreasing by nine million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven. So that goes back to that ten million dollars, the standard allowance for the ARPA funds, being offset by the increased expenditures of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Eighty thousand of which is for two half-ton pickup trucks for the admin department. Thirty-one thousand, three hundred for a turbid meter that was recommended by FDEP during the wastewater treatment plant inspection. Twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-one for radios. Ten thousand for increased fuel cost. One thousand, three hundred and seventy-five in workers' comp cost, and ten thousand, seven oh seven in software cost. The Renewal and Replacement Fund Budget is decreasing by the ten million for reallocation of ARPA funds. The Solid Waste Fund Budget is increasing by two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, a majority of which is the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred that was approved by mayor and council for the refuse truck at the May council meeting. The other fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy relates to increased fuel cost, workers' compensation premium, radios, and software upgrades. Stormwater Operating Fund Budget is increasing by twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. This relates to increased fuel cost, workers' compensation, and software upgrades. Information Technology Fund Budget is increasing by one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. This relates, majority of which is eighty-five thousand, five hundred for the radio replacements, and additional eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three relates to the workers' compensation premiums and software upgrades. The Fleet Fund Budget is increasing by sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen. Again, increased fuel cost totaling sixty-one thousand, the remaining amount for radios and workers' compensation premiums. The Workers' Compensation Fund Budget is increasing by eight thousand, four dollars. That reflects the increase in premium over the estimated in the original budget. I am available for any, that was a lot of detail. So feel free with any questions.
Discussion.
We, we count on you. We rely on you.
Public comments? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two-two dash R dash zero-nine. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Eight F, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R dash twelve, sunsetting the Environmental Advisory Board. Please read it in the record.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash R dash twelve, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Edgewater, Florida, sunsetting the Environmental Advisory Board. Thank you to advisory board members for their past advisory service, reviewing our resolutions as office hearers and provided for an effective date.
Staff report.
Yes, sir. The council created the Environmental Advisory Board on August third, twenty twenty, for the purpose of serving as an informational resource in matters relating to preservation and protection of the city's environment. During the May second, twenty twenty-two council meeting, it was determined the powers and duties given the board fall within the purview of staff, other advisory boards, local, state, and federal agencies. Therefore, in an effort to provide for greater efficiency, the council desires to sunset and dissolve the city's Environmental Advisory Board. So the recommended action before you tonight is a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash R dash twelve.
Open the public hearing. Council comments? Do what?
It's a resolution.
So we gotta do what?
We don't have to do anything. It's a resolution, a public.
No voting.
We have to have public.
Yeah, public comment.
On a resolution?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. You said it's changed. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Public comments? I would, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two-two dash R dash twelve. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Under number nine, board appointments, request on the Economic Development Advisory Board to approve appointments to the River to the Sea Transportation Planning Organization, TPO Citizens Advisory Committee, Bliss Jameson with alternate being Rebecca Cruz. Staff report.
Yes, sir. In the past years, the Economic Development Advisory Board has selected one or more of their, one of their members to represent the city on the TPO Citizens Advisory Committee, or the CAC. The CAC is responsible for providing citizen input and recommendations to the TPO board concerning transportation planning and programming for review of all transportation studies, reports and plans, and/or programs, and for making recommendations to the TPO board pertinent to the subject document. At the regular, regular meeting on May fourth, two twenty twenty-two, the advisory board selected Bliss Jameson, along with Rebecca Cruz, as an alternate for Edgewater, and respectfully recommends both for approval by the council. So the recommended action before you tonight is a motion to appoint Bliss Jameson, an alternate Rebecca Cruz, to the TPO Citizens Advisory Committee.
Council comments and questions? Citizens comments or questions? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Bliss was on the CAC. She was actually Councilwoman Bennie's appointment.
Oh, she does a good job.
So we're, we're gonna reappoint her? Yes, for the City of Edgewater, which has not happened for a few years.
I'm entertaining a motion.
I'd like a motion to appoint Bliss Jameson with an alternate of Rebecca Cruz to the River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Other business under nine B.
Ten A.
For me?
Ten A.
Is it ten?
Ten A.
We're at ten A.
Oh, that's, yeah, but, but, it's not numbered, not numbered correctly.
Ten A.
Okay. Requested City Council approval for a beer garden at the Independence Day celebration and fireworks on the Fourth of July, twenty twenty-two. Staff report.
Yes, sir.
That's what that's for.
Staff would like to offer a beer garden at the Fourth of July celebration this year. AMVETS has offered to host the event, has applied to the state for necessary permits. The proposed site will be the parking lot north of City Hall, a part of it, not the entire parking lot. The garden area will be fenced off with one way in and one way out, and a police officer will be stationed at the entrance. No alcoholic beverage will be allowed outside the garden area. So the recommended action before you tonight is a motion to approve a beer garden in partnership with AMVETS at the upcoming Independence Day celebration and fireworks display on Fourth of July, twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Samantha, what are we gonna have? Are we, are there gonna be like a regardeau, a little, um...
Local beers?
No, I'm talking about across the street. Are there gonna be like a fair deal, like we usually have or not? No?
No, sir. Because the fireworks for safety, they'll take up the entire boat ramp, Kennedy Park area, just like we've done in the past. That's all the launch area. So all the activities will be here at the City Hall complex. So we have live music, we'll have the beer garden, we have food trucks, we're gonna, asking some demonstrations like from Math Max Athletics. We're gonna, um, asking some demonstrations like from Math- Max Athletics, um, and we'll have a DJ and we have other vendors and food and I believe the Elks Club is also gonna do food and soda and water and things like that.
This is this map, right here.
Okay.
Are, are there times for it? Like, do we have to have, um, you know, like a set time that it's open or do we have to advertise that or anything?
So events, the events start at six PM and go through the fireworks. Um, if you wish for us to close the beer garden before the end of fireworks, we're happy to oblige whatever council desires.
I mean, that's hard to pinpoint like that time exactly, so. Say the end of the fireworks.
Yeah, just cut it off at the end. I think people are drinking anyway.
And my, my question.
People are drinking anyways.
My, my question in regards to what, what Christine was saying. I mean, you got four in this map, four parking slots. That's gonna be the beer garden. Is that gonna be big enough?
It's a twenty by forty tent that we'll be renting to put with the orange fence around it.
I just wanna make sure.
Is it local breweries?
No, it's AMVETS and so they're using their liquor license and they get all of their supplies right now through Budweiser directly. So they're working with their rep for a truck.
And I think the reality is you have to stay in this twenty by forty, police officer protected.
When you drink?
When you drink, can't walk.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to stay in. You can't.
Well, that's why I'm saying, is it gonna be big enough?
Well, it's, it's my understanding each beer, sixteen ounces, is seven dollars. So I'm not anticipating any issues.
Right, okay. So, um, the other thing I would say is this says in partnership with AMVETS, I would say, I don't know how to put it, but.
To not make us liable?
Right, so, well, not that, but if something falls through with AMVETS, we're not, we're not hosting it. It's.
No, it's over.
It's AMVETS, yeah, if that makes sense.
The police aren't gonna serve the beer?
Yeah.
Actually, reality.
That's a good idea.
The police could serve the beer, but the police chief has told me no.
They have a lot of ones. They need to raise the money.
That's a good idea. I like that.
So we will stop it though, once fireworks is over, we close it down. Is that what we agree upon?
Just about, usually at, once the fireworks are over, everything stops. It's autumn. You wouldn't believe how fast.
Sure, but just to create a rubric so people don't hang out, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but you're right. They may hang out at the beer garden. Because they couldn't get in during the, the, uh.
Right. I don't know how many people you're gonna have in that twenty by forty.
Right.
Two and a half hours, basically, from six to about eight-thirty, right?
They buy a wristband.
New friends.
Nine o'clock when they do the fireworks?
Well, when it gets dark enough or.
They're gonna be a kitty ear.
All right. Citizens comment. Come up to the microphone, sir.
Who's gonna regulate?
Sir, please state your name and address.
John Fear Ready, twenty-six oh three, Travelers Palm Drive. Who's gonna regulate? Who's gonna card? Who's responsible if there is a public intoxication that more than one police officer is capable of handling? Is the city gonna be responsible for it if other, other citizens get hurt, if other citizens get trampled? How are you gonna get an ambulance service down that street if everything is closed and somebody needs medical attention because they're intoxicated?
We have a heavy police presence.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but he's, the city manager is saying that there's only gonna be one police officer.
At that station.
At that point, but there's a heavy police presence. And, and Chief, you're gonna have ambulances here, right?
He has a, he has a side-by-side during the fireworks, right, Chief Larissy? And the police do too.
All the department directors along with the city manager creates an event action plan and all those issues are resolved in writing.
And that's, and is that available to the city residents as well?
It's a public record, yes, sir.
Okay.
And we have a heavy load of employees on duty that day.
The AMVETS bartender who is TIPS trained and their volunteers who are a TIPS trained to make sure that the public is not over served. That's what TIPS training is and is with their liability and their insurance.
Yes, so they hold their own insurance.
So the city's not gonna be liable for anything? The AMVETS will carry all of the insurance liability aspect?
That's correct.
Thanks you for your response. That's good.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we grant approval for a beer garden in partnership with AMVETS at the upcoming Independence Day celebration and fireworks display on July fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
The mayor votes no.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Okay. See, I don't know what number it is.
Ten B.
Approvable, approval of reimbursement of, to New Smyrna Beach Housing Authority Development Corporation and Affordable Housing and Edgewater. Staff report.
Yes, sir. You've already heard the one half of this during CRA presentation. This is the other side with you wearing the other cap, uh, as a city council. Housing Authority approached staff last calendar year about possibly funding an affordable housing project they were going to do on Turgot and Maryland Drive. The project included necessary repairs to a multi, multifamily property. During September, two thousand and twenty-one, staff requested council fund this project with seventy-five thousand dollars, um, of CRA monies and the council agreed to the request. The project is now complete and the housing authority's closed-out documents have been submitted for reimbursement. So the recommended action before he tonight is a motion to approve the reimbursement of seventy-five thousand to the New Smyrna Beach Housing Authority from CRA funds.
Got you.
We don't have much choice, do we?
We entered, we entered into the agreement, yes.
Yeah.
All we're doing is asking you to release the funds because they've completed the project.
Good point.
But you're correct.
Any other comments with the council? Send us the comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the reimbursement of seventy-five grand to the New Smyrna Beach Housing Authority Development Corporation from the CRA fund.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Ten C, Indian River Property Discussion. Staff report.
Yes, sir. Dale Williams owns a large parcel of land at thirty-one seventy-six West Indian Bull River Boulevard, uh, next to and continuous to the Florida Shores Truck Center, and he'd like to sell it to the city. On Thursday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, city staff toured the property and believes it would be a good fit for the use of the city hall complex. The first step towards acquiring the property is a signed contract between the city and Mr. Williams, uh, allowing ample, ample time for due diligence. During this time, several things must be accomplished, including but not limited to, one, review of the sales contract by the city attorney, which has been done, two, an appraisal of the property to ensure its value, three, a phase one and phase two and governmental assessment to ensure all is well with the land, and four, a development of a counteroffer to the contract for sale given by Mr. Williams. Staff believes the ninety-day due diligence period will be sufficient to complete the necessary investigation. Prior to the end of the ninety days, staff will make its findings known to the city council along with a recommendation to either move forward with the purchase negotiation or refusal to purchase. During this time, for any city will be able to back out of the contract fully and without penalty. A contract for sale purchase is attached and it should be noted, one hundred thousand dollars is being offered to the seller as earnest money to be held in escrow. Budget amendment required at some point it will be if we follow through with the, uh, purchase of the property. So the recommended action before you tonight is a motion to direct the city manager to begin the due diligence process toward the purchase of the land owned by Dale Wi- Williams on State Road four forty-two and authorize the mayor to execute the sales purchase of the land.
How much property is it?
It is a total of seventy-nine point three acres.
Seven.
Seventy-nine point.
Seventy-nine?
Yes.
What is the contracted price?
Uh, two point four. The lake, uh, takes up fifty-five point four acres and Uplands totaled, buildable Uplands total, twenty-three point nine.
Is it, is it east of the trucking center or is it, is it?
East.
East, okay.
It's, uh.
The old shell pit there?
East, east. Are we gonna have access to the lake?
It's ours. I mean, if we purchase the property, the lake is ours.
Well, it only shows that we're part of its hours.
It's supposed, and this is what the, um, survey will bear out, which I'm still waiting on. Um, the, uh, Realtor contends, or actually take that back, Dale Williams contends that the lake goes with the property.
I feel like it does.
Can we build a boat ramp there and open it to the public?
Well, we have to acquire the property first.
I know.
Good mission in there.
So. We can look.
You know, in my mind, thanks.
So the two point four million, that's simply just what he would like. That's asking, correct?
That's correct.
Not in any contracts. This is a due diligence process for us to keep moving.
I think, listen, I think it's a good deal because, you know, we're running out of property here. Um, that's gonna be halfway between Florida Shores and the new Deering Park. You know, and we, and then if we didn't, because Deering Park offered to build us some property that we would lease the city hall. We wouldn't be under anybody's gun. We'd be, you know, on ourself. It would be accessible to the public. Um, and plus, we're gonna be using, uh, the COVID funds, right? The.
That's the idea, yes.
Yeah, so.
There's a house on the property, correct?
Right.
And there's a renter in that house.
That is correct.
Um, what about an appraiser and a surveyor? Has anybody been in contact with one? Because to get either one of those, a commercial.
We have to, we have to require both, um.
No, I know that, but.
The survey, the survey is underway, okay? At least that's what the Realtor's saying. The appraisal, the property has to appraise at the asking price.
Yeah, no, that's not my question though. My question is how, what is the time limit for the appraisal? Because it's, right now, they're so backed up, is the thing.
And that's what I related this afternoon again to Realtor.
Cause you're saying ninety days.
And she believes it will be done sometime this week.
Wow, okay.
Two appraisals, that's right, because it's government. We'll get another one.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea, really.
And the survey is already underway? Like, they're ordering it already?
She's already done it, or he's already done it. Dale Williams has already ordered it.
Perfect.
You know, the, the problem that I have with this piece of property, and I, I talked to Lynn about it, is that truck stop next to it. It looks like a garbage dump. And I don't want city hall that next to something like that.
I believe Chief Larissy is already on top of that.
Okay, cause that's bad.
They've already, they've already, they've already been cited for one, one, at least one code violation, right?
Oh, my God, excuse me. I shouldn't have said that. There's a lot, there's a lot of code violations out there.
Gigi, we can plant, we can plant hedges.
Sir, you got, if you wanna speak.
Split a bamboo.
Yeah.
If you wanna speak, you'll have to come up to the microphone.
Hedges are not.
They have a lot of really good fishing in that lake there. I fish there when I was a kid. It was great.
Yeah, we could use it. We could use the lake as, as tourism. Have them come out there and they can get off the.
Go ahead, sir.
I, he, you were speaking, man.
Go ahead.
Rich Dill, twenty-one, twenty-eight, Mango Tree. I'm just, my wheels are turning in my head because it's such a large property. Now, are you talking about also expanding, uh, fire rescue possibly out there? Uh, you know, for, uh, a building out there also on the property?
I'm su- I'm sure that.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, because a lot of people aren't, aren't thinking of, you know, the future. And also for this property, uh, expanding possibly the parking lot for the boat ramp and everything. Being we have such a wonderful facility across the street and a little bit larger park. You know, I mean, there's a lot, you know, we can do that, you know, would, you know, make things a lot nicer. Uh, that I don't think people are thinking of the future and.
Well, we have to.
But I'm saying, I'm saying, I mean, because everybody's just saying, oh, jeez, you know, you know, looking at the downside of everything, but.
You're looking at the entire complex.
And then now you're saying that lake out there is part of it. I mean, there could be a wonderful park out there also around the lake. I mean, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah.
I mean, with the bicycle trail that being built and everything out along there. Okay, thank you.
No, I, I was, you, they were stepping on you, sir, not.
No, that's okay. I, you know, some, you know, whatever, but thank you.
Okay, yes, yep.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have to do something about city hall. We don't have enough room for our employees right now.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to direct the city manager to begin due diligence toward the purchase of land owned by Dale Williams on State Road four forty-two and authorize the mayor to execute the sale and purchase contract.
Second.
Roll call.
Wait, wait.
For discussion, I believe you have more in the audience that would like to make a comment.
Would anybody else like to make a comment? You gotta come up to the podium.
Please state your name and address for the records. I worked for a large company called Lockheed. Experienced a huge underground plume based on environmental contamination. Has there been an assessment done with respect to this property?
There has been an environmental assessment, one done at some point. We will have an environmental assessment, one and two completed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're at, let's see, we entertain a motion. It was, uh, and then we had a second, so roll call. Any other public comment?
Bless you.
We'll go back. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Yes.
Okay. Officer report, city clerk.
Um, starting next Monday, the thirteenth, at noon through Friday, the seventeenth, at noon, is qualifying for the two thousand and twenty-two general election, which is for, um, mayor and districts one and three. June nineteenth through the twenty-second, um, Monique and I will be at the, uh, Florida Association of City Clerk Conference in Orlando. Lisa will be in the office. Um, she's just here until two o'clock social. She'll be here at least for that point. Um, it will be available by phone or email if you need me. Reminder that we have a budget workshop on June twenty-seventh at six PM. And city offices are closed on Monday, July fourth, and the July council meeting will be on the eleventh.
Thank you.
City attorney.
Uh, yes, just real quickly, um, on the Ingalls litigation, uh, John Ingalls versus the city of Edgewater. As you recall, I filed a motion to dismiss the amended complaint and we agree to be flexible on the date since the plaintiff is pro se and is, uh, suffering a serious health condition. So it's currently rescheduled for June twenty-first, uh, but we'll be in touch with him before then to make sure his health permits him, uh, appearing at that hearing to, uh, to represent himself. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City manager.
I have one more piece of property to tell you about. There is a small house on Park Place, which is the road that runs just east-west of the, uh, police department. Goes from Park North to Dead End. Um, they approached us, Darren and myself, a couple of weeks ago, wanting to know if we were interested in purchasing that house. Staff met to discuss it. We believe that, given the right price, appraised, that it may be a good thing to consider if we're going to sell this property, uh, because it would help to square off the property that we've got now. Um, to do that, we have to have two appraisals, uh, and, um, bring it back to the council for consideration. It's a frame house, two-story, about a thousand square feet. The idea to begin with was, was to, uh, stick, excuse me, place the city's clerk, city clerk.
I didn't know that was coming.
I don't know what I did to y'all.
I assured her that she, her operation would not fit.
The shack in the back, no?
Yeah. But it may add value to the overall complex, uh, property. So if you're of the opinion that we should move forward, all I need is consensus at this point in time, we'll have it appraised.
Do what they want, yeah?
Yes, please.
They're not making any more land.
That's right. It will be done.
All you got?
That's it.
We'll entertain a motion.
We got citizens.
Huh?
Citizens comments.
Oh, thanks. Citizens comments. Anybody wanna re- uh, leave us with anything good or bad?
No comment?
No questions about what we did?
Pardon me?
My dad's coming to make a comment.
Come on, Mr. Bracy.
I'll say my name and address for the record. One ninety-six, Jeff Bracy, one ninety-six Westbrook Circle, Oak Hill, Florida. You're talking about the property off in four forty-two behind the truck center?
Right.
You, you, you've opened up a golden opportunity of buying that property. Not only for just boating, but you could have inboard and outboard hydroplane races. The Canadians, the North American Boat Federation would come down and put it on Venon. You're talking, there's numerous things. Hyak racing, you're gonna buy this, right?
Well, we, we started the motion.
Well, I got excited because there's not much land. You have Lake Alfred out on four fifteen. And that lake, they, they dredged it for, for what, the last two years?
Lake Ashby.
Lake Ashby. This lake, they've dredged it and made it wider and bigger. It's gonna be one heck of an ass.
If I remember right, it's crystal clear, too, right?
Excuse me?
Crystal clear.
Crystal clear.
Yeah.
You're right in the right direction.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your daughter's service. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Yes, thank you. Oh, thank you.